Order, I need an approval of the agenda for July twenty second. There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Approval of July fifteenth, twenty twenty four minutes.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. First item on the agenda is to consider adoption of the Carroll County Comprehensive Plan. This was actually on our agenda last week and we had a few things come up and I know Mark you wanted to kind of address a few things, take a moment and with you stepping into your role that you did, you wanted a another week to revise and look over it. We did already have public hearings for this exact. The Carroll County Comprehensive Plan, we've had two public hearings actually, so is there anything else you wanted to address before we adopt?
No, I I and I appreciate taking the extra week, I would be able to spend a little bit more time on it. Uh, this week and while I don't have it memorized, um, it it uh came more into focus and I realized there were some changes made. Um, as a result of some of my comments last week. Um, you know, most notably, um, I again, there was several things, but I um, to, I'm ready to move forward with it today, um, by all means. Um, and I know there's a lot more that got put into it and I appreciate all of that too. I just want to make sure that it is, I think, well understood that ultimately politically, um, this like and things like that, that it'll it's up to this board, which I have trust and confidence in, you know, that will make, you know, those decisions if and when any of these items come up, okay? Uh, but no, the fact that most notably was the two mile limit. Um, and I did receive a rather lengthy call last week, uh, from one of the concerned citizens out there and, um, the uh, you know, my comments were last week that I was just questioning why moving forward with this, when this two mile limit thing is still kind of hanging in the balance. And, you know, Jean made a very good point, which I understand clearly that this is a uh highly dynamic document and it serves as somewhat of a beacon and a light and a guiding point, you know, for the Board of Supervisors and our uh other department heads and elected officials. Um, but I was just questioning the two mile limit thing and so, uh, I I just want it well documented in the minutes, if it meets your approval, that the two mile limit is still, as as we approved this today, that the two mile limit issue is still subject to change and probably, well, I'm not going to say likely to change, but believed to be changed. Uh, to some degree, to be, you know, written slightly different than on page sixty two. And so that that would be all my comments today. There was, yeah, right when I say I'm done. We get a car salesman started, but the the, on page seventy nine, it does clearly say about future land use. It says future land use is determined by the zoning board and can quickly change. The future land use of the county is changed on a case by case basis. So that should pretty well cover any concerns that our citizens have over this issue. Um, but I just want to make sure that it is well documented in the notes that um, the potential to make a change on this later on this summer or fall is likely to occur. Thank you.
As we stated last week too, with this plan, this isn't the end all be all. This is a starting point and it is a constantly can be revised, it can be moved. The two mile limit, um, discussion is not over. We are currently, I am currently waiting to get every buyback to pull in all um, people that would be a part of that decision to try to set up the meeting. I'm still waiting to hear back and I will send a follow up email today, um, and I would agree with everything that you have said, Mark. Does anybody else have? And again, I want to thank, uh, sincerely thank Region Twelve, Sarah, anybody that's been a part of this comprehensive plan for all your hard work. Um, I've I've seen all the meetings, I know Scott has attended quite a few of those meetings. I do appreciate all of our work and your guys' um, passion for Carroll County and its growth, so I do appreciate that.
Well, I think the only, this document is a cut off at a point in time and there's always something to change. Uh, so it's not like it's, it's like you said, it's a guiding document, but it is always subject to change.
There were two land use changes that were made also on the current one, new plan that were requested and those were granted and then they they're reflected in the new plan. They were down by Manny and down by Tom.
I will make a motion early adopt to the comprehensive.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number two is to approve resolution twenty twenty four zero zero three, county sale of real estate to the city of Halber. This as well was on last week's, the public hearings agenda. We did have some questions about first right of refusal to go back to the county and the use of this Halber Ridge. Uh, everybody received the email that we got back and I did receive a letter and intent from the city of Halber. The county attorney revises and during the other question, um, I think both of our two areas of concern were answered.
I had one question, I reached out to the city of Halber, city clerk, and they had no plans on changing the public housing portion.
Okay.
Yes, right, that's correct.
And has to remain for municipal use.
I see, I see no problem, so I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
There's a motion, motion in a second, if the resolution's a roll call, Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, minors?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number three is to authorize chair to sign, but claim deed to the city of Halber.
I will so move.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. While we're signing this, we'll go ahead and start item number four, secondary roads is to review bids and award contract for L FM dash TM one dash seven X dash fourteen, also known as M sixty six, the shoulder grading. You had the bid letting this last week.
We did. Um, had a lot of interest, but received two bids, uh, for the project. Uh, one from Healy Excavating, one from Leroy and Sons. Healy Excavating came in at, uh, six hundred and twelve thousand, three fifty three and seventy five cents. Leroy and Sons came in at three hundred and thirty nine thousand, sixty seven dollars and zero cents. Um, we had engineer's estimate of four hundred and sixty two thousand, eight seventy four, uh, and sixty two seven, so. We had, glad we had a couple bids, um, had, glad we had the the low bid that we had, uh, under our engineer's estimate. I think they're very capable, I know they've done work for the county in the past, um. You have any questions on the bids themselves, but I would recommend we award the contract to Leroy and Sons if there's any any questions.
What's, what's the deadline on that to complete that?
Completion date is October fifteenth, basically trying to get it done this, this fall.
So, from what I just heard, you said there was a lot of interest. There was a lot of packets received, the one to this back, is there any reason why, like, was there timeframe?
I I didn't, I didn't, I haven't talked to a lot of the, I guess, the contractors that didn't bid. Um, my guess is, is the timeframe was probably a little bit of a crunch for some. Um, I know there's definitely, you know, a work out there that needs to be done, so that that's probably part of it. Um, other than that, I don't know for sure.
Right, the two you received were both local, that could have had something to do with it.
They are, they are, yeah.
I did hear feedback on the timeframe was not, some people didn't think there was enough time to get it done, um, with what they already had on the books, but I I I see no problem with Leroy and Sons.
And we knew that was potentially an option, a problem, but I guess our full intent was we wanted to make sure we got it done this fall. So that way we're good to go with with, uh, resurfacing the road next, next spring, summer, so.
Why the disparity between the two that said, and I know that's, you have an opinion on, you certainly don't know why, but.
I don't know for sure, I I, I don't know how much, uh, shoulder, ex, shoulder work, Healy Excavating has done. I, what I know of them, they're, they've done a lot of drainage work and things like that, so it might be a type of work thing. Uh, they maybe done more than I, than I know, but, uh, um, I know Leroy and Sons has done a lot of work like that, so I don't know if they're hungry and need the work or what the situation was, but, uh, um, I.
The other ones are busy.
And that's part of it, if they have a little work to do, they're, they just don't.
Do you think that maybe Leroy and Sons need a job filling because we got a big job up north, that's what? I think that might have something.
Yeah, I mean, it's potentially, yeah, I mean, I I know, um, I know there's some people that were definitely looking for work and others that had some things going on, so, and it's in their, it's in their backyard, I mean, that's part of it too, I mean, proximity is always a good thing, so.
And what was the total, not three hundred?
Three hundred and thirty nine thousand, sixty seven dollars and zero cents.
Three, three, nine, oh, six, seven.
Do the emotion with us?
Yeah, we do need a motion to approve the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve Leroy and Sons, I'll bring you out.
Go ahead.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
I'll stand.
Close. One, I'm saying, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, one other item to note, the, that which is very close to this project, the, uh, M sixty six, three hundred and fortieth street intersection down by Pucks. Um, Auden County led the charge to get a rice project to improve that intersection and, um, had a pre-construction meeting on Friday and they are looking to get started this week on that intersection, so.
Big detour.
There'll be, yep, definitely be a detour, um, over, basically all the way over to seventy one, up to one forty one and around, so. Um, they're, they're looking to close down that intersection, uh, M sixty six Tuesday is the, is the plan right now. Um, Auden County's leading the charge on that, but I believe they'll be getting something out, but, uh, we'll follow up on that as well.
Uh, our original plan was to have that done at the same time, wasn't it? We were trying to time that, uh.
Trying to, um, and and I, and we'll see, you know, we get contracts signed for our project, we'll see how soon they want to start. Um, there's potential for some overlap, um, I'm sure they'll be done before we get done, but, uh, I guess you it's hard to make the stars align, I guess.
So when will you actually award the contract, by the time you do the legal work and?
So we, awarding the contract would be today, signing the contract would be as soon as they can get it back to us, I will send them the contract today. Um, possibly as early as next week, I wouldn't say, I would think no later than the, the week after that would be my assumption.
And just to follow back to that, uh, M sixty six intersection closing. Give, uh, Mike maybe a little bit more details, maybe, maybe you can just report on that for the new, you know, just to kind of get a heads up to. That way, the closure is Tuesday.
Yep. Got a fourteen mile detour?
I'd have to look, Scott, I don't know for sure.
Tuesday next week.
Tuesday tomorrow, yeah.
They, it's all on hard surface though, so.
The detour is correct, but I'm sure not everyone's going to follow the hard surface detour either, of course, we know how that works, so.
Uh, another thing on, um, they're supposed to start the fricky building pavement next week, Monday, you know, if you can block out the barricade or something.
Yep, yeah, let, let me know what we need, we can. Help you out.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six is to approve our quarters. Number five, to approve the recorders part of the report, morning, Ashen.
Good morning. April, May, June, twenty three, twenty four, four. Uh, do you guys have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, our numbers are slowly increasing, which I like to see, it feels busy again. I think I said that last time, but definitely, I know it started off being a year slower, but it's definitely coming back up, so I'd like to see that for the economy. Um, even the money on sheet two that goes to the state is, is up quite a bit, so we write those checks to the Department of Revenue every month as well. Are there any particular questions on any certain item, line item? With that.
I have one question, this is just a generic question, hunting and fishing is down. Do you think that's because a lot of people are doing that online or?
They created that you can renew online, so yes, we don't, we're not a big county that sells a ton of hunting and fishing license, like some of the smaller counties, so it's not.
I think that's why that trend is probably.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, anybody else have questions on our quarterly report?
I'm here.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Great, item number six is to approve the sheriff's quarterly report. You know, I missed the pain read.
Good morning, everybody. So far, so good.
Good.
For Monday. Everybody got a copy of it, they get them to Courtney in time?
Yeah.
All right. So for April, May and June, um, the sheriff's office took in forty two hundred dollars in change for mileage. Almost ten thousand dollars for fees, eleven hundred dollars in weapons permits, of which two hundred and ninety went to the state. And twelve hundred in miscellaneous and a hundred and thirty eight thousand in room and board for the jail. So that is a grand total of a hundred and fifty four thousand, nine hundred and seventy four dollars and nineteen cents that we took in. Um, after we paid out the state what we owe, um, we had one hundred and fifty three thousand, five hundred and thirty five dollars in one cent for revenue.
You know what your average, in the, in those five, what was that, average town performance?
This morning was thirty two, I think, so I don't have an average.
Like we.
It did just, it just fluctuates in Pope County.
I'm used to that, we, up to June, all the tensions, we don't call inmates, we call.
We call them inmates here.
Yeah.
But yeah, it all just fluctuates in Pope County, and they came here Friday and picked up four. Um, they'll bring some this week and replace them, so.
So your, your revenue is looking good as far as, I think you had four hundred and ninety two projected for the year.
Yeah.
And, yeah, a bit, this quarter, that'd be five hundred and fifty two, or have.
Well, I, I did attach last year's.
I saw that.
The whole thing, and for total revenue, we came up with four hundred and eighty four. So, close.
Yeah.
So it just all depends on them, but.
I have one question, not on the quarterly report, go ahead, Jean.
On your room and board, can you break out the expense, what that's costing us to house them then too?
I could.
You know, it, it looks good when you just see the revenue, but there's also expenses to that too.
Which time you want me to put into this?
No, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, I didn't say you have to do it.
I could, I could figure roughly, I mean.
Maybe look up for the year total for the year, I mean, it always looks good looking at just the revenue, but there's also the expense side that we need.
Well, sure, and we're gonna have, we'd have expenses if we had one prisoner in there or.
I understand.
Um, or.
It's the same overhead.
Same overhead, so.
But I mean.
But we're definitely covering costs for half the staff and meal prep.
But I think, I guess my point is, I want to make the point to public debt, this is an all.
Oh, absolutely not. I would think they'd realize that. Do you have questions?
Yeah, just on the, um, the Motorola cameras.
Yes.
Can you explain that lease, it's a three year lease or?
Five year.
Five year.
Five year, and their, their first payment came in higher than what was projected and unfortunately, we lost our sales rep for our, he just up and moved to Arizona, so we're kind of at Motorola's, um, mercy right now. But it, it's a five year lease plan, um, initially we were supposed to pay, I think, fifty thousand dollars upfront and then make payments incrementally for the next four years, um, but they jacked that up to seventy five, I think.
So there'll be four more payments on this?
Yes, four more.
Was I know there was a monthly lease fee in this?
No, we pay yearly.
Okay.
Any other questions for me at all?
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's quarterly report, secondly.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, thank you.
All right, have a good day, everybody.
Item number seven is to take a look and approve the homestead and military applications. Mind you, as we're going over these next two items, um, this is confidential information, so please do not disclose any names.
Some regret it somewhere inside, isn't it? I see it.
What you're looking at is the all the new disallowed. For twenty twenty four.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the homestead and military application, if there's no other question. There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item number eight is to approve disabled veterans homestead tax credit applications.
There's a total of eight, I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion?
It's a really fast question.
Yep.
Um, I haven't seen these in so long, is that pretty normal? Is that a normal year?
Yeah.
Just can't remember.
Yeah.
Eight. It seems low to me, but.
Yeah, that's, that's your just saving.
Yes, right. Right, okay, all right, that, that's one question.
So there's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Item number nine is to approve the lease with ABCD LLC, the fricky parking lot, and this is a three year lease at two hundred and thirty dollars a month. And like Mike said, we're also going to be doing some work over in that parking lot, potentially within the next week or two.
Three year lease, yeah, what kind of increase was this, if any, none?
None, but they did have an clause that they'll do a five, three percent.
That's been in the last couple of years.
But no one resists.
Uh, and I, I didn't recognize the owner, is that still a Dries family?
No.
Is it one over or it's changed?
Well, I guess I thought one on one was a Dries.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
And so we're resurfacing that, that was your earlier question?
Well, we're redoing the retaining wall. I would do a survey and the retaining walls on our property, so we're redoing the retaining wall. And then, uh, pouring eight to ten foot out, fix the cracks, they gotta, they gotta cut four foot of it anyways.
Will that affect the alley?
No.
Okay, so the city doesn't need to be notified or the bank?
No.
So we're not, we're not doing that, east or north south retaining wall at all.
It won't close it down or anything? That would be my own question, they should be notified if it, if it would be closed down.
I'll make a motion to approve this lease.
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second to approve the lease with ABCV LLC, any more questions? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries.
Best part of his job is getting to learn.
Well, the nice part of the payables this week, this next item is pretty low.
No, I want to make the motion to approve it.
We're starting a new fiscal year.
Item number ten is to approve payables, and the payables this time is in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and eighty eight cents.
Yeah.
I did look through them, um, I don't have any questions.
Nor did I.
Go ahead, Scott.
I'll make a motion to approve the payables for two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and eighty eight cents.
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, item number eleven, to approve fiscal year twenty four payroll for publication, did everybody get kind of, sometimes take a look at the different?
I did. Seven million, eight hundred and eight dollars worth. But I kind of got in I first bike, it's eighty nine, eight million, nine hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars.
Uh, Sheriff's Department, secondary roads.
I'll make a motion to approve the publication with wages.
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number twelve is to approve the twenty twenty four tax expansion left, again, that's with the confidential, so please keep things out. There's eight. One, one.
I'll make a two motion to approve the name on the, uh, twenty, twenty four tax suspension list.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number thirteen is maneuver management annual updates. Remember, grading site, section thirty four Pleasant Valley Township in annual report. Justin Schrader, section thirty three Wheatland Township annual report. R and B finisher, section twenty five Washington Township, no changes. And we are to item number fourteen, committee reports.
Last week, Monday, Zach and I went road tripping mainly on gravel roads, looked at train seventy seven. Um, Tuesday, reviewed quotes for fire, file cabinets for this room and um, Courtney ordered those, they should be delivered today. Wednesday, I went to ambulance station, um, asked about state baseball, the ambulance will not be on site, city did not contact them this year, could lead you to the forecast. Um, I also discussed staffing with Jamie and the new ambulance quote, which will be coming next Monday. Thursday, Jean and I worked the bid letting at secondary roads. While I was out there, I went through their claims. Thursday, I got ahold of the city clerk in Halber about Halber Ridge transferring to the city and no plan, no plans on changing the public housing. And Sharon Miller from the courts also said Thursday that they will participate in the chamber coffee on Friday. So that was nice because I wasn't sure if they were going to participate or not. Um, Friday, went through the remainder of claims in the courthouse. And I met with John Weber, Courtney and I did, about a media table for the press, which I think will be ordered. And about a desk for the back room, the office in the back. This week today, eleven thirty, I have foster parents, foster grandparents in RSVP eleven thirty. I'll probably be leaving early to come back here for a noon conference board meeting. And Tuesday at noon is CCGP, and Tuesday evening is the Farm Bureau Annual Meeting in Berita. And Friday is chamber coffee in this room.
I can go next. Last week, Tuesday. Or last week, Thursday, it was supposed to be CCGP, but exactly more than that got canceled. People being available for that. And then it shut up again for Tuesday morning. Next week, Thursday, I attended the bid letting out at the Secondary Roads. And was fifteen mil pretty courthouse. Friday was. At Cherokee at the YES Center, we do know ten center board meeting. It was actually kind of a flat month except they, they're full on Friday, they're fifteen. Average per month is eleven point seven two. There, one of the things that they did change, they also do a transportation service. Two thousand mental health people. And we've had some cases where they've got called to do a transfer. And once the car has left, they don't, they're getting called for any cancellations. So we're putting a fifty dollar minimum cost on that cancellation. Because that person's in the car and waiting ready. They did add three new staff up there. The one thing they said about being a fifteen beds, we're a fifteen bed organization up there, so when the fifteen bed we started getting concerned about. Who do we got to go next? Because. The fourteen counties that are members up there always are guaranteed one bed, so. So it's usually one of the, we do house for Indians and so it's usually one of them that gets taxed. I did feel a lot of calls and a lot of different things. I've spent a lot of time on the phone with. CCGP this week and also some other staff members. This next week, I have a conference board meeting this afternoon at noon. Tuesday is the CCGP board meeting, the executive board meeting, and then also Tuesday is a regular board meeting. I will not be attending those too because I mean, Scott will be there before me. Because I'll be out of town. But I went to, I am going to zoom in. We have Rolling Hills Mental Health meeting. And then I probably come back after the coffee changer thing. And then I have an HHS meeting out at New Opportunities.
Monday, I had childcare, Carol era childcare center, we're meeting, pretty routine meeting. They're discussing about. Needing a part-time payroll bookkeeper. They have someone that's doing it right now, but probably not long term. It's going to be kind of a tough get because they only need someone for like five to seven hours a week. So we're just going to see how it works. We reviewed financials, financials are stable. They, they're going to do quite an extensive flooring and painting upgrade. Throughout the center, hasn't been done since the flood. Remember we have that water backup and. And then election of officers and I did not make the cut, so that's all right. The, on Thursday, we had the decat meeting. I did that right over here. And we reviewed financials, once again, approval of officers, once again, I didn't make the cut. The new opportunity update. Also had various reports here and report coordinator report. Partnership for families report, but other than that, a fairly routine meeting. And then this is not county business, but if I'm needed, I'm working state baseball all week, so if you need me. I should be, you know where to find me. That's going to be a pretty busy whole week down there. And then I do have a question about chamber coffee.
Yes.
When I was in on Friday, has this been communicated throughout the courthouse? Because I ran across several people that did not know anything about it.
Great question and thanks for bringing that up. I confirmed with Tony on Friday. Some of the details and that email will be going out today, but there will be refreshments, indolence on Friday.
Tony.
Bating. Tony baiting, baiting construction. Yep, they're going to bring the coffee indolence and I just want to verify with them that there's going to be people, that there will be. An email either from me, myself, Courtney or Dalton. We can send another one.
And again.
And Courtney and I talked about it Friday as well.
Yeah, department heads were out, but I mean, a lot of the employees just didn't know anything. They were glad that I brought it up.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. So Courtney, we'll just. Create a generic email and set it out.
What's your dress code? Wear something, okay.
I don't know.
Got to bring a little levity to this board, man, come on.
Suit and tie and joy.
There you go.
Yeah, sure. So we still, July eighth, we had a. Conservation meeting, they had a merit access update. I don't know if anybody knows on that, but merit access with. The King family is trying to trade. A piece of dirt for a ninety-nine year lease on another piece of dirt that touches our property there. So Jason has put together. Concept plan for them and in there. We would get first right to rent within ten years of decent sized pasture next to there to. This voted unanimous on there to do that. Some Saco Trail Bates were, Lakeview, Sac County is closed up there for that, but they're getting. Most of them, the roads, the crossroads will be done. They are done, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, one hundred and tenth is the only one that's done some concrete.
Good. The cabin and shelter has wifi out there. The Tegas Wildlife Area is going to go to non-toxic shot. And they're looking at quotes to get a storage shed put by the main, main shop out there. And then we had, it wasn't on the agenda, but we had a. Biker come in, a concerned biker came in and gave us a whole list of stuff that he wants done. And I do not have that list with me because they, it's going to be on our next agenda item, but. Certain things like he wanted mile markers every mile from Lakeview to Carroll and. He wanted like. Our, like bike rangers and.
Is he going to be willing to do a donation?
I, I don't know. He had some really good ideas and some of that. I wouldn't go for, but yeah, it was, it was interesting. So it's going to be on our next, next.
I think we all got a copy of what his wishes.
Yes.
I think some of them are good ideas, but there's also money that followed.
And today we have that conference meeting, assessor at noon.
And you have newspaper radio.
And newspaper radio.
I can go next. Last week I had Wesco. I just wanted to give you guys a couple numbers. They currently are serving for. June twenty twenty-four, hundred and seventy-seven individuals. They did move one of their buildings that they do like. Kind of like a daycare where the residents can come and have snack, cook and things like that. They did move buildings. They are looking for more board members. And they did nominate me into the. Executive Board, so this will be my second. Term on their executive. They have a fundraiser right now going that they. Duck release, there are these plastic ducks that the fundraiser, they let them go on a bridge and let them go down the brick. They so far have raised ninety-two hundred dollars just in that. That's a fundraiser, which is great. We also have two people doing bit, or not bids. Grant writing for us. One of them is a lady from Berita. She's going to do some of the smaller. Grant processes and then there's a large company, if we ever get into a position where we can do for a large grant funding. They will use. I'm going to go ahead and send that around. If you want to look at the financials, we'll write ahead. After that, I had the ISAC Executive Legislation Board and you guys will be. Voting on the recommendations. Well, this is any supervisor from ninety-nine counties in Iowa. Getting in a proposal of legislation that they would like to see. Brought forth by ISAC this last year, this board goes through all those requests and decides whether they're. They should move forward and become a statement or they can be an objective. I'm going to skip over this. Skip over, run through this really quick. Statements still are, we're going to have home rule, state mandates and funding of local services. Our object, our objections, objectives is eminent domain juvenile detention. This one you might want to pay attention to. I thought of you, they're talking about pulling it off. Because they feel like that it is kind of. Just an uphill battle and revolving circle. There's not a lot of answers to questions that are being. So pay attention to that one. So that's kind of your only loss. Medicaid funding and then the Iowa natural quality. And quantity, policy statements, they're going to keep up the broadband. County mandates related with district court security, merger. Emergency management funding, forest reserve, property tax exemption, land redevelopment trust, local government reform. And mental health. Disability services and I'll note in the wings, you know, if you take a look at this, but we are going to remove from policy statements. Those meetings. And this kind of started all out when. COVID came and people were moving and we were going to remove that because the governor has since changed and said. Different regulations, CSF regulations on what can happen with public meetings. You guys can take a look at this. Some of these. I think one of the main focus here was E and A. Levy. Think that's going to be when we go down to Des Moines for ISAC in a couple of weeks, that that's going to be a huge conversation. That's going to be had at that meeting. It's going to be talking about E and A. Levy and there was a comment made during that meeting that they had talked about. Regionalizing. E and A. So again, another talking point that's going to be coming in Des Moines.
Are they thinking that maybe the surcharge is viewed as a, as a tax or an unnecessary tax or?
I think a lot of that.
Eye or?
That's, that's comments coming from counties that don't quite have the population or tax base even have. An ambulance service area. So they're, they're talking about moving into more of a regionalized space so that. That some of those counties that don't have services could count, could partner with other contiguous counties to be a part of their ambulance services. And then how do you encompass that? It's kind of, these are all talking points. There's no decisions being made, but that is the thought process that was happening.
Who serves on that community locally? Anybody? Ian, one of our guys?
I can talk to Jamie about that.
Okay, is it more?
Jamie's actually going to be presenting next week.
So it's more of an ambulance issue and not an EMA issue?
It is, it is. But then they also talked about encompassing the sheriffs as well. Bringing them all into one pile of emergency management sheriff and ambulance. And throwing a levy on that. It's, it's an interesting conversation. I don't know how that would work.
They're going to combine EMA and first responders?
But that, there was just some comments made. You'll notice. You follow one of those requests from a supervisor, you can try to be clear that they, they didn't get much traction. Yeah.
What was the open meetings thing again? Go back to that.
Well, Governor Reynolds, she, she signed into, well, that we can have Zoom option. But there's qualifications and there's certain things that you cannot do. We're not going to keep. Discussing something that already happened. So it's just going to come out of our policies. Policy objective and then another. When I say them, that's Jamie Cashman and Luke. Thirdly, I did go out to Secondary Roads, had some conversations with Amy and Zach. We also touched base on the safety committee as well. Where we want to see that going in the future and kind of what our goals and objectives and goals are. We'll look at that going forward as well. I did set up the assessors meeting for today at twelve. I did email the applicants there. Where are the meetings happening today? They do understand that. Close session and I do have permission from each applicant to go into close session. So that will be happening today at twelve. I came up to the courthouse, talked with Courtney about some items. Scott did. And I also got the letter. I reached out to Adley and got the letter for the Halber Ridge. Purchase, good claim deed purchase. This week I had a conference board meeting today. At twelve and then courthouse ribbon cutting and Courtney, do you want to? Make that email? I do want to do so. On Friday, it's ribbon cutting and chamber coffee. Thanks for the meetings. They'll be supplying the coffee and donuts. And then I will go get the water, drinks, things like that. Also, Courtney, can you make a note that the? Director of the ambulance, Jamie, would like to present on seven twenty-nine. I think that's next Monday.
Yep, I have that already.
So it'd be a good opportunity if you have any questions to kind of discuss some of it as well. Then I'm also going to bring up next week, dress nice because I think we need to take another board supervisor picture. Mark from that for sure. So we can update it online. It will be from eight tonight.
Eight thirty to the speech.
I think. River, there's that sewer boats due on Monday due in it.
Yeah, and I talked to, when I was up there, I talked to upstairs and there's a lot of them come in. It was leaning pretty well. Which was good. There was one, one other comment.
Courtney, do you have anything?
Obviously the ambulance. That's it right now. That's all I have.
Any comments from those in attendance? Can you introduce yourself as you can, sure?
Hi, I'm Paula Halber. I live in rural Carroll County here in Ewalt Township, which is one mile east of Manning. And I just wanted to thank you for addressing the changes that we wanted to the comprehensive plan. Just a little bit of background information for some of you that don't know. Back in two thousand and nine, when this comprehensive plan was put into place. Our farm was targeted and earmarked as future development and that happened without our knowledge. And permission. And we also notified the other individuals about that and those were the Langels east of Templeton. That was earmarked. It was listed under future development in the text and on the map. And so when the comprehensive plan was started again to be redone. I notified a couple supervisors. Thank you for listening to me. And I also spoke with the zoning administrator Carl Wilburn at that time. And then Sarah and. The zoning board members and I asked them to please. Make sure that our land was removed from that. And then I noticed I was called and said that. It's been taken out. Don't worry about it. And so the public comment period happened and lapsed and then I saw. Oh, wait, it's actually not been removed. And so that's why there was another update. After the public hearing, because I did catch that the map was referred to again in the plan. And we wanted that removed. So thank you for listening to our concerns. It's not fun when you feel like you have a target. That's been put on your property. We believe in landowner rights. And we want to be able to determine what happens to the future for our land, not someone else. Thank you for listening to our concerns. We've had the community of Manning try to annex us in. We told them no. Look within your city. For land, for development, for housing projects. We've been told by them that they want to put industrial development on our land. We told them no. And then they tried to do the two mile zoning. To control what happens around Manning and we got a petition going. And we have a lot of signatures and we had a meeting. And everybody told them no. And so it's not just Carol. That's facing a two mile zoning issue. Manning still wants to do it, is my understanding. So if there are going to be any more discussions in the county on two mile zoning, please include. Individuals that are outside of Carroll as well in the discussions because. It is happening that people want. The land. I was told directly by the administrator, we want your bare land. I said, it's not bare land. It's productive ag. It's a business. It's a third generation farm. And it's going to stay that way. And I don't believe in using eminent domain. To go after landowners for development. And I hope that you listen to constituents. Who bring up these issues when. who bring up these issues when the zoning issues do come up. Because we all care about growth. We all care about having a good county tax base. We care about development, but it needs to be in agreement with the landowners and not against them. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you. I keep believing. Motion to adjourn. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?